To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of reflection for servicemen and women throughout the world and for all those who passed away in our community during the past week. Thank you.
Mr. Rexler?
Here.
Mr. Rogan?
Here.
Mr. Lausten?
Here.
Mr. Gawhan?
Here.
Dispend with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A annual financial report from the Office of the City Controller for the year ending December 31, 2012.
Are there any comments? If not, receive them filed. Any clerk's notes, Mrs.?
Nothing, Mr. McGough.
Do any council members have announcements at this time?
Mr. McGough, I have one. The Tripp Park Neighborhood Association roast beef dinner will be held Sunday from noon to 3:00 at the Community Center. Tickets are available and it's $10 at the door. Thank you.
Anyone else? Tonight's agenda, I will say is very light in terms of legislation. There are a number of appointments and other than that, nothing. As far as the appointments, we have received resumes from a number of the people who have been appointed and have been told by the administration that prior to a final vote, that resumes will be in for the remainder of those people.
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Bill Jackowitz?
Good evening, Scranton City Council, Jamie Amel and Ms. Reed. You know, I'm not really a bad guy. Actually, I think I'm a pretty decent guy. And I normally try to follow the rules and I try to follow the regulations. You know, City Council's rules was to submit questions in writing. I did that. I have proof that my faxes were received by City Council. Mr. Rogan answered one of my questions last week in regards to the loan for Boskoff's in the mall. Mr. Gawhan answered my question about my garbage being picked up. But I still have like 12 other questions out there. And I submitted them on February 19th and February 25th. Now, I followed the rules that City Council put out for us citizens to do, to submit the questions in writing. Now, like I said, I really believe I deserve an answer. Not only me, but I believe that every citizen deserves an answer from our elected officials. You know, that's just the way I feel. You know, maybe it's my military background, being a career military person, where discipline and so on and so forth is part of it. And that's all I'm asking for. Now, I don't care which council person answers this question, but if you are not going to answer my questions, then please tell me that. If you are going to answer my questions, can you please at least have the courtesy to give me the answers to my questions? Does anybody on council want to address that? Am I going to get answers or am I not going to get answers?
I'll answer it. Two things, I'll say that, Mr. Jackowitz. Number one, some of the questions that you posed have been answered.
I've had two.
No, because some of them have been answered. Maybe not directly to you, but certainly the ones dealing with the consultant have been answered during the course of the meetings.
Okay, I'll give you that one.
And the second thing is that some of the questions that are posed are things that are not in our purview, that we really don't have control over. And it's sometimes difficult, you know, some of those questions are better asked of either the mayor or, you know, someone else.
I did submit them to the mayor.
Okay.
I'm waiting for answers from him also.
Okay. So, that's just a partial response to what you asked.
Okay, Mr. McGough, I appreciate that because, you know, you gave me some response. I appreciate that. That's all I'm asking for, is hey. And it's not only me, there's a lot of other citizens out. That's why a lot of people don't attend the meeting. As you can see, there's nobody here. And one of the reasons why I'm told over and over again is why do you continue to waste your time to go there? Because they're never going to answer your questions and they're never going to give you a straight answer. So, the reason why I continue to come is because it's just my personality. I mean, that's just the way I am. What can I say? But again, you know, like, that's just like, one of my questions was about the lace factory. And now, they just had a fire down there. And, you know, again, what is the status on that project? Obviously, people are working on it. When's it going to be completed? How much long? Hold on, Pat. There, Mr. Rogan, I'm sorry. Also, February 1st has come and gone. What's the status on the North Scranton Junior High School? Plus, April 15th is really not that far away. And that was the deadline that was given. It's really not that far away. What's the status on that? These are things that I would like to know and other citizens would like to know. Because it's citizens' taxpayers' money that was given in these loans and grants. You know, if the grant came from the state, it's still citizens' taxpayers' money. Okay, Pat, I'm sorry for...
I did bring both of these up with Ms. Abley and I do have an answer on both. We did also discuss them in the caucus a little bit. On the lace works, the project is moving forward. What the fire may actually have been caused from was some of the work that's being done as far as remediation of lead and asbestos in the building. That's the first stage of the project. It's obviously a huge building. Until the asbestos and lead is removed from the property, they can't move forward on the formal development that you would see. On the North Scranton project, I spoke to Ms. Abley on that one as well. That one is also still moving forward. Right now, they're working with HUD to get some paperwork together regarding reimbursements for lower-income housing. So, that's where that project stands as well.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. And I'm hoping that some of the residents who are watching this broadcast or will also appreciate it because at least they have a better understanding of what is going on. As far as the pothole issue goes, I don't know if there is a resolution or solution to that. All I know is the potholes are getting bigger and bigger and bigger. And I just replaced one tire and I hope I don't have to be replaced anymore, but we do need to get something done with the potholes. And as far as the pothole machine, that thing's been history for a long time. It's been stored in the Sewer Authority. From what I understand, I think it was used once and that was it. So, that's the status on the pothole machine. Thank you.
Ron Elman?
Mr. McGough, I saw where you parked tonight. Is that an expression of future aspirations there?
It's an expression of old age. I don't want to walk very far.
Can I park there without getting a ticket? Or if I get one, can I bring it to you?
You can bring it to me. I don't know if it'll do you any good.
Yeah.
I have one of my own that I'm...
Our esteemed Chamber of Commerce recently wasted about $30,000 in hiring this financial wizard, whose advice is to get our credit rating up, which would take 20, 30 years, so we can borrow more money. We already owe hundreds of millions of dollars. What kind of advice is this? This just never stops. You people take the taxpayers for your only source of revenue. There's businesses out here getting away with murder. These nonprofits are businesses, you know, and you just refuse to go after them. Right here in this city, Mr. Amoroso probably doesn't care or doesn't know, 60% increase in foreclosures. About a month ago, there was 550 in the paper. A couple of weeks ago, there was 51 more houses in the paper. These are people's prized possessions, you know. They'll probably only get one chance at it and they're losing them. People are just pouring out of here. This very week, the two houses next to me went up for sale. Two beautiful neighbors. You couldn't ask for better neighbors. They've had enough. They've had enough of this out-of-control school board. They've had enough hiring in the city. You know, we keep hiring consultants because people can't do their jobs. You need to fire them if they can't do their jobs. You don't need to hire consultants. This just goes on and on and on and it just doesn't stop. You know, it's like I just said, you can't rely on the property owners to be the only source of revenue and that's what's going on. You know, we've had over 20 years of pal and Mr. Cross, they don't have one minute positive thing they've done for the city. We got Ms. Linda over there at HUD giving 25-year interest-free loans to some deadbeat businesses with a hope of getting a little money that shouldn't have gotten a loan to start with if that's the feeling about them. Downtown, all I hear about is Al Boskoff's like he's the victim. He owes us money. It's turned around where he's a victim. The developers are victims, you know. The neighborhoods are falling apart all around us. There's these sidewalks, streets, everything. And all that people are worried about is downtown. I'll tell you, if Mr. Wizard and Gerald Cross and Ms. Linda ever had to go get an honest job like working in a fast-food restaurant, they would all be fired halfway before the first shift is over for gross incompetence and stupidity. Thank you.
Mr. Hetman?
Good evening, Counsel. Gerard Hetman from Lackawanna County's Community Relations Department. Good to see you again this month. To begin this evening, we would just like to remind Counsel and all citizens that the 2014 Armed Forces Day Parade will take place on Saturday, May 17th, in downtown Scranton. The parade steps off at 11:00 a.m. from the corner of Penn Avenue and Vine Street near the Gene Omerly Veterans Center. This is our third year in our department of working with the Armed Forces Week Committee to try to grow and develop the parade into a bigger and better event that pays tribute to our men and women in uniform and all of our service veterans. We try to make it better and better every year. So, if any community groups, any school groups, or any agencies or entities or nonprofits in the community would wish to participate with a marching delegation in the parade, or if anyone, just an interested citizen, wishes to volunteer or help plan the parade or any other events taking place during Armed Forces Week, which is that week in May that precedes the parade, they can contact Sergeant First Class Tammy Maslowski at (570) 496-8908 or Joe Sylvester at (570) 961-2696. And we do have some posters that promote the parade that the committee gave to our department, and I'll leave them with Ms. Reed. If you could display some of them in City Hall and other city buildings where appropriate, we'd appreciate your assistance. Every little bit helps. I know that every spectator that lines the route is much appreciated by the veterans and the military personnel who march in the parade. I know I've seen a number of council members present at the parade, marching in the parade, and I know that everyone appreciates your support when everyone shows up and salutes our men and women in uniform. So, thank you. The second item this evening is, for the second year, the Lackawanna County Commissioners and Lackawanna County Highway Safety Department will present our annual Bike Safety Fair. It takes place on Saturday, April 26th, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. at McDade Park at Pavilion Number One, which is the first pavilion pulling in on the right side of the park. There's actually two parts to this. The Scranton Police Department and also the Lackawanna County Sheriff's Office and District Attorney's Office will do free bike safety demonstrations for children. And then, all children present get a free bike helmet to take home. We've got a number of sizes and we've worked with community partners to fund the event and sponsors, so every child gets a free bike helmet. And they'll also be able to enter that day to win a free bicycle, compliments of Cedar Bike and Paddle. But preceding that, children can go to the Lackawanna County website and we'll also leave you a paper copy of the flyer. The website's lackawannacounty.org and they can download and print one of our blank helmets and they can color it in with a design of their choosing and submit it to the Commissioner's Office, either in person or by mail. And the Commissioners then choose one male and one female winner among the entrants. And it goes up to 13 years of age. Anyone younger than that can enter. And each, the male and the female winner will also receive a bike. The only stipulation is if those individuals come to the Bike Safety Fair, they can't win the random drawing. We can't have two bikes going home with the same child. But it's a great day. Last year, we had close to 200 children in attendance and I'm sure that all of the council members and everyone here can relate with me when I say riding your bike around the streets of Scranton growing up is almost a rite of passage in our area. So, it's a great way to teach kids how to do that safely and we get great cooperation from the Police Department and we appreciate that. And then, lastly, an item relating to Penn State Extension. The Penn State Extension branch in Lackawanna County will be supposed to spring Vendor and Craft Fair on Saturday, April 5th. It takes place from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at West Scranton Intermediate School. A wide variety of different crafters and community vendors will be there. And the funds raised benefit the PROSPER Program, which is a family-based drug and alcohol prevention program designed at, targeted at adolescents in Lackawanna County and in particular in Scranton school districts. Penn State Extension has worked with the school districts for the past eight years using this program to take a family-based approach with adolescents in terms of drug and alcohol abuse prevention. So, it's a great opportunity to visit some of your neighbors who may have businesses and take advantage of the products that they offer for a good cause that helps strengthen our community. So, that's all I have for this evening and thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Hetman. Is there anyone else who wishes to address Counsel? Please be careful.
Marie Schumacher, resident and taxpayer. I guess maybe I must be something in the air because I sort of feel the same way as Bill Jackowitz. I do have a host of questions, but my senses are telling me that Counsel's not going to be very receptive in answering them so, or timely at least. So, I'll just have to bother Mr. Belzoni with the barrage of write-to-know letters and go that route. So, tonight, I'll stick to a few comments. First, I have some concerns about what Mr. Amoroso presented last week. Number one, the obvious, is I don't think that he told us very much that we didn't already know and haven't known for a long time. And second, during the 2014 budget process, Mayor Courtright sent a representative of his transition team to advise Counsel in the mayor-elect's team opinion that revenues for this year's budget were overstated by $7.5 million. Yet, Mr. Amoroso did not once mention this deficit or identify actions to fill in that particular hole. And the most troublesome is the last. I need to review the tape of the actual presentation, but he did say something about the Uniformed Employees Court Award, bringing it into the budget. And if that means what I think, what I fear actually, not think that it means, he's sort of upgrading the status of that bond, I guess, for lack of a better term, over the other bonds. And that would really, really make it difficult if we thought the Scranton Parking Authority problem was keeping bond sellers away. I think if that were to happen, they would just turn and run as fast as they could and that troubles me. Something I've talked about before is ability to pay. There's again been not a lot of good news. The first was on the 16th, which was Sunday, noting that the low-income enrollment, the percent of students who qualify for free or reduced-price lunches, the percent change calculated over a five-year period. And Scranton has gone from 56% in five years ago to 68% of the children being eligible. Now, that gives you some indication of their parents or their household income. So, that certainly is not good news for the city. The next was yesterday's on the jobless, noting that the number of people employed fell by 4,600 over the year to 255,200 in January. Everything I've seen come out of Harrisburg or from Mr. Amoroso really is, how can we get more taxes or more fees out of the people who are already paying? And I think it's time that Counsel concentrate on improving the environment here in the city such that people want to come and work and live here and that businesses want to locate. And hiding our heads in the sand and saying our tax policy is not the cause of some of these departures or people not coming here is very unrealistic. And again, I spoke about this before. I just brought page one, but if anybody would like it. It is the document that the Scranton Sewer Authority filled out, it's three years ago now, that Gannett and Fleming did for them. It was their long-term control plan for the combined sewer operation and it was a financial capability assessment. And I recommend it, well, I've been recommending since 2011, that every council person read that. Because what it does is calculate the ability of the rate payers to actually pay. And it did result in a change in the rates and stringing them out maybe a little bit more than would have been. And I think you need to read that. And if I may finish with one other. The other thing is, and I'll just read the first paragraph and then I'll leave it here for copies. It's titled, it's an article that's written by the man who was the first receiver for the city of Harrisburg. And the title is "The Critical First and Last Steps in a Municipal Workout: Vallejo, Harrisburg, and Detroit." The first critical step in a municipal workout, whether inside or outside of bankruptcy, is to get all parties, the debtor and the creditors, to accept that they will all have to incur significant losses as a result of a workout process. Secured creditors will do better than unsecured creditors. But taking that into account, the losses need to be fair and proportionate and the municipality needs to come out the other end of the process, able to operate successfully into the future. I think this is the kind of person we should have hired, an mediator, and this is what we should be doing instead of just tweaking the existing system. And I hope you will all read it and take that under advisement. Thank you.
Trying not to waste any time. Dave Dobson, resident of Scranton. And I have a little printout here of something like... First of all, my name is Dave Dobson, resident of Scranton. Taxes paid. So far, I'm still working on the rest. Now, at the top of my list, I put "fair share." And many people have come up with this idea before and I think a few could always adopt it and I wouldn't be insulted. Instead of a trash fee, we should have a public service fee and it should be levied on everyone, at least a couple of hundred dollars for a tax-exempt organization. And if they're much larger, they certainly could afford to pay more. The only time that the U, for instance, was penalized was when fire alarms were hit as a prank, not when somebody burnt their toast and set off a massive fire alarm and our fire company had to show up. And we do have some crime problems. I mean, there was a murder up in Hill Section, senseless murder of a college student from another college. So, I think it should be a public safety fee and street maintenance fee and that's the way it should be. Now, on the Chamber of Commerce, already it's to a point where they should drop Scranton from their title. I mean, I agree with Mr. Gawhan last week. Nobody's fighting for us. It would be very interesting, very interesting to find out whether that new building that the former diversified is going into isn't another tax-exempt. And I'd like to point out that Sanofi Pasture received a tax exemption for 10 years. We built parking garages and everything else. Now, there's a $200, $1,000-a-year hole in the budget. Andy Spireglio was complaining years back that the Hilton was given over a quarter million dollars a year, free parking, which they, I understand, they charge their customers for. My Comcast bill for internet, phone, and television has gone from $176 to $196. It's already a major. So, if we negotiate a new contract, please start to discuss the prices. It's time for a rollback. That's not worth any more than $100 a month. And furthermore, I don't watch most of the silly garbage that's on it. I watch the documentaries. I'm like an information sieve, like that little robot that they had the film on. Input, input, you know, years back. If anybody's ever seen, what was the name of that? Batteries, no, it wasn't batteries, none included. I'll think of it someday. And as far as the unions are concerned, I'd like to point out, and this also relates to our default on the parking garages. We lost $25 million from the same people that are criticizing us for allowing a default on an unauthorized loan. And also, Ms. Fay Francis was very accurate last week in pointing out that it was like a criminal trial here, when you people were just asking a few questions on the financing and wages and so forth and day-to-day operations of the Parking Authority. It was actually shameful to have an attorney sitting next to him telling people not to answer you people, which is something you've been bashed for time and time again. And I also like to point out that on Prospect, Willow, Hickory, and God only knows how many other streets, the utilities have been tearing them up. River Street was torn up also with that big leak. And the repairs don't cut it. They don't cut it. I certainly hope they will be back. They didn't think that we had a six-month memory loss or something. Because I remember what those streets looked like beforehand. They weren't too bad. Now, they're terrible. They're awful. And a lot of potholes aren't the fault of the city not doing things. It's their fault for coming in and doing third-rate repairs on the way out. They should be repaved. Now, also, I have an article here. I'll leave it with Jamie. Courtright Needs to Fight Job Exodus. You know, the guy wasn't even, didn't even serve a day in office. Not one day in office. And they were already making skits about him and cartoons about him, just because their choice didn't make it. You know, nobody's perfect, but I'd rather Mr. Courtright than anybody that they pick. You know, nobody's perfect, but I'd rather Mr. Courtrite than anybody that they picked to be our fearless leader. And I'll leave this with Jamie. How do you fight job losses in central city when, when they, the county and the, and the Chamber of Commerce are actually drawing people out of town and seducing them to go to other places? Tax-free, of course. After we went in a hole over them. And finally, on Steamtown, please read it. I've asked for a letter from council several times. That was one of my small disappointments with the last council, and we never got it. And there's some information there about a lot of losses. I apologize about the, the poor print. I guess it's time for a new cartridge. Seems like that's on a daily basis, but that's beside the point. Finally, on the way out, trade packs. Tired of two-hundred-and-forty-five billion for supplemental income for low-wage work? Call your representatives, call your senators, call the president, and tell them, take the trade packs and stuff them. Stuff them under the rug, stuff them anywhere they want, and if they get smart with you, well, you have my permission to tell them to stuff them somewhere else. Thank you and have a good night. Don't forget the Bach Bach, the Golden Parrot's back. By the way, the Keystone Pipeline steel is coming from India. Jobs!
Anyone else?
Fifth order, five A motions.
Mr. Wexler?
I'd like to take the opportunity to congratulate the St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee for their efforts on Saturday. It was the first time I ever got to walk in the parade so I could enjoy the entire route, to see the streets filled mostly with families, all having a good time. We didn't really see any true problems downtown. I'd like to also thank the Scranton Police and Fire Department for their roles, and also for the great job that the DT, DPW did in the cleanup post-parade. And I'd also like to thank all the people who came to Scranton to enjoy our city, and somehow we need to find more ways to do that. One thing I just want to touch on, and this, this is, we're going to talk about this again this week. When we ask about who's fighting or working for Scranton, I can tell you right now that the people that I sit with on this dais, every day, we are working and fighting for Scranton. We attend meetings at night. Mr. McGough attends meetings in the day. So, it disturbs me to say, and I hear people say that no one is fighting for Scranton. It's a tough fight, so we might not be winning, but we're fighting. And I do not, I don't appreciate the fact, when I'm hearing that same, that no one is fighting for Scranton. My fellow councilmen and I am, I know that. Thank you.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, thank you. Just a quick update. Last night, I met as part of the Citizens Advisory Council through OECD, just to give an update on where everything stands. At last night's meeting, we worked on the surveys that will be going out very shortly on the city's website, and they will be distributed through community groups and presentations will be made. Every five years, the city is required to go through this process. And basically, for, for the residents out there who want to have an input on how our federal dollars are spent. The survey will only be a few pages, and it lists different items that the city, some that the city currently uses CDBG money for, some that the city does not. And for the residents to rank how they feel those, that money should be spent. If you believe more money should be spent on paving, you could, you know, put that as a high priority on your survey. Once that survey is finalized, I will be sure to bring a stack to the city council's office, and I know we'll be distributing them all throughout the city through different organizations, and it will be posted on the city's website as well. So, I definitely will keep everyone informed as those things progress. I did speak a little bit about these two projects earlier, but I did want to just reiterate again. First, with the North Scranton Junior High School project, I did speak to Ms. Abely regarding this project, and it is still moving forward. Right now, there's some paperwork being done with, between Goodwill and HUD regarding the low-income aspect of, of some of the housing in, that will be there when that project's complete. And regarding the Lace Works project, as I mentioned, this project, this, and I may be wrong, but the Lace Works is probably the biggest or the second-biggest building in the city of Scranton. It's a lot of work and a lot of time just to get it to the point where they could begin the construction and modernizing that facility. When that building was built, everything was coated in lead paint. All the pipes were coated in asbestos, and that's a very expensive process and a very time-consuming process. That's where everything currently stands on that project. I will continue to follow up on it. And I do know the developer, Mr. Cordero, has been very open with city council. We've had him here a number of times, and I've spoken to him a number of times regarding other issues. He's been great to work with, and we're looking forward to that project continuing to move forward. Also, regarding the Lace Works, and I know Mr. Laskin will speak about this further, what a great job the fire department did yesterday. Two fires, back-to-back, an hour apart, one in one of the largest buildings in the city, and one right over, you know, in North Scranton, and, and they did a phenomenal job, so really hats off to them. They, they did a great job, and this is why we have a paid professional fire department in the city of Scranton, and why it's so critical that we have that fire protection. Finally, I'd just like to echo what Mr. Wexler said. Many of us on council did have a chance, opportunity to walk in the parade on Saturday. We, I believe we all had a good time seeing residents out, and, and it was good to see the downtown full and the businesses busy. And Mr. Wexler's right, we need to do, have more events that bring people into the city. And hopefully, on May seventeenth, with the Armed Forces Parade, the streets will be lined up as well, and I know I'm looking forward to, to walking in that parade again this year. So, that is all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, I do have one more item. My, sorry, Jack. We talked about this in the caucus a little bit. We were speaking about the conditions of the roads, and specifically, North Main Avenue in West Scranton. Anyone who lives in West Scranton or drives through knows that is probably one of the worst roads, if not the worst road in the city. What city council is going to do? I met with representatives at PennDOT, this is about two weeks ago, and I was lobbying them very hard, not only for those holes to be filled temporarily, but for Main Avenue to be milled and paved, a proper repair that will, that will last and, and what the residents deserve. So, city council will be sending a letter to PennDOT, asking that, that street's not only paved, but it's milled and paved properly. And that is all.
Should we believe him? Mr. Laskin?
Thank you. First of all, I too would like to give my kudos to the Parade Committee for the St. Patrick's Day Parade this year. We're blessed with a beautiful day for most of the day, and it was nice to march in the parade, as Mr. Wexler said, and just to see everyone lined up along that whole parade route. There were quite a few children and families out there, which was very nice. The Parade Committee did a great job. Our police department, fantastic, they kept control. I didn't see any issues. I mean, I, I believe there were some minor issues here and there, but they kept them clear of the parade route. The fire department and the Public Works did a fantastic cleanup job afterwards. So, you know, it was a great day for the people of Scranton, and hopefully, we get more and more people out for these situations, parades, and whatever. And remember again, May seventeenth, the Armed Forces Parade, as Mr. Hetman mentioned from the county. We'd like to see as many people out as possible for that. Next, I'm glad Mr. Rogan gave the report, because I, I was going to ask about the, the Scranton Lace Building and the Goodwill Building tonight. Some people had asked me what the progress was, and I'm glad Mr. Rogan was able to give us an update on that. And the Lace Works coming into play again because of the, the fire yesterday there. And I too have to congratulate the firefighters for the job they did there. You know, a building under renovation, a lot of money being invested in that building. When I, when I heard there was a fire there, you know, my heart sank. I figured, you know, it could be bad. But fortunately, they were able to get in there and confine it and, and, and save the building for future development. And that's, again, why we have a fire department like we have. I believe they're second to none, not because I was there at one time, but I see it on a daily basis. These gentlemen are dedicated, and they go in there and fight the battle, and they're happy to win the war. And that's an example. When I was on the job, we had the Oppenheims Building, which was under development at that time, and we had a major fire in there. And fortunately, we were able to save the structure where it was rehabable, and, and you see it today. It, it had been renovated, but that could have easily been destroyed. But that's the kind of professionalism we have. And then right, right after the fire at the Lace Works, there was a fire in North Scranton, maybe half a block away from Engine Nine. And they made a quick response. They had some backup engines, and, and the crews got there pretty rapidly, although the station was empty because they were at the other fire. Fortunately, they were able to get into that house, and, you know, if you drive by the house, there's not a hole in the roof, the siding is intact, it, it looks pretty good, but, you know, they have to replace the windows, and there's a lot of interior work. So, unfortunately, there were a lot of people displaced in that fire. Fortunately, they all escaped without injury, and now the rebuilding process begins for them. So, I, I understand there may be a fundraiser coming up for that family, and we could announce it in the future to help them out. But those are just some of the incidents, and, and there's many incidents go on on a daily basis here that you don't see in the paper, or, you know, you don't read about or hear about, because they're done and taken care of pretty rapidly, small fires, stuff like that. But our police department is constantly, you know, and it can't publicize a lot of the drug arrests that they make, because they're going after some bigger fish, so they have to keep it quiet. But on a daily basis, they are chipping away at the drug problem in this area. And, and they don't want to see us end up in the same position as our down, down-valley city. You know, they have their problems down there. But our police department, again, second to none, they work professionally, and they are fighting the fight every day, and not looking for any recognition or anything, but they are making a difference. The difference is, it is safe to walk on most of our streets. Is there work to be done? Naturally. But, you know, it could have been a lot worse. And, and I believe they're, you know, they're keeping everyone safe and doing it on a daily basis, and a lot of it is, is under the wire. People don't see what's going on. So, I do commend them for that. And lastly, I think it was Mr. Dobson mentioned about the utilities tearing up the roads, and I know that's happening in a few areas. Kaiser Avenue, which is a nightmare if anyone tries to drive out there. And West Side, Lower West Side, there's a couple streets there that have been torn up since the fall, and, and it's like, one day they're here, a week later, they're back. I do have to say that the mess they've created, the weather didn't cooperate. They had some holes that they filled in, and, and it washed right out, and there was a lot of mud. I do commend the company, I believe it was TSE, they have come back and repaved those areas that they had dug up. However, there are still some issues that, that have to be resolved, and, and I'll be getting to the appropriate department heads with those, but, you know, in their, in their work, what, what they're doing there, basically, I don't know. I mean, it's one day they're here, water, next day they're in another house. But there has been some damage done to properties, trees. And I've noticed where they've patched some of the blacktop on driveways or sidewalks for the people. They've actually covered the, the shut-offs for the water and gas. Some of the people have caught them and had them come back, but I just have to make sure they're all done. But it's, it's unfortunate. I mean, it should be done right the first time. It's only going to cause problems down the road. But I, I see down the future, maybe in the near future, we have some kind of a, an open meeting or a town meeting with these, in the city, with all these contractors to sort of explain to our constituents what their schedule is, where they're going to be next, when they're going to be done in a certain area, what the expectation is. I know Kaiser Avenue, I mean, it's, it seems like they're in the same place fifteen times, and then they're up the other place fifteen times, then they're back. There's, there's just no uniformity to it. And, and the traffic backup is a nightmare. Now, I understand the progress is going to be well worth it in the long run, but I think there has to be some kind of a get-together and a better system on how they're doing these repairs, how they're going to maintain the traffic flow, and, and what to let the people in different neighborhoods expect. I mean, I understand, we have a lot of projects down the pike on different streets. And at least if we give everyone a heads up on what to expect in their neighborhood and when it's going to happen, because it, it is a mess. And, you know, it, it's not easy to do road construction and, and keep it clean, but there are ways they could appease the neighborhoods while they're doing it. And, you know, it's just something we're going to have to discuss down the road and see if we can, we can work on, on some kind of a plan to let everyone know. I mean, we have bridge projects coming up, again, another number of, of road projects in different areas. We're in South Side, we're in West Side, but when are those little, those streets going to be completed, and where are they moving on next? We should have, you know, somebody should be able to know about that and, and to prepare. And, you know, that's all I have to say on that, but hopefully, we can, you know, work on something to educate everyone. Thank you.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, thank you. Just a few things, very briefly. Mrs. Schumacher had asked two questions last week, and I had the answers to both of them. The first question was about how much money the city receives from the Environmental Department of Environmental Protection from the recycling grant. The city receives grant funding from the Department of Environmental Protection based on annual recycling tonnage. Reports are filed annually. The most recent amount received deposited in July of 2013 for tonnage collected in 2012 was thirty-four thousand, four-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars. It went into a special cities account. The amount we likely will receive for 2013 will be in excess of forty thousand. The second question was about whether or not the city will pick up garbage from people who are delinquent on the garbage fee. The city will always pick garbage up. If they didn't, obviously, it would affect the health and welfare of the citizens, and it would provide a sanitation issue. But the city is working with Northeast Revenue Service to be able to provide the ability to lean those people who do not pay their garbage fee. Mrs. Francis brought up a question about the pothole machine. I think Mr. Jackowitz touched on it, so did Mr. Rogan last week. I spoke with our DPW Director, Dennis Gallagher. The pothole machine is obviously broken. It cannot be repaired. It's currently located at the Scranton Sewer Authority. It's going to be scrapped, and it's been unusable for seven years. So, that's the answer on that. Just like to echo the comments from my fellow council members about the job that the DPW Police Department Parade Committee, they, everyone did a tremendous job this past Saturday on our parade, and I thank them for that. Also spoke to our DPW Director, Dennis Gallagher, today about the list of concerns I mentioned last week from the residents of North Scranton. I was at that neighborhood meeting last Monday, and the DPW is working on a, a list of, of concerns that I received from those residents. They're doing a wonderful job, and that department and that director, Mr. Gallagher, has been very responsive and very quick with the responses. So, I thank them for that, and I will forward that information along to the appropriate people within that neighborhood group. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Reed, sixth order, or fifth order?
Five B. For introduction, a resolution, appointment of Thomas C. Horlocker, 902 North Webster Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18510, as a member of the Housing Appeals Review Board. Mr. Horlocker will be replacing Richard Leonori, whose term expired November 24, 2013. Mr. Horlocker will be appointed to a five-year term, which will expire on November 24, 2018.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5B be introduced into its proper committee. At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second. On the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, and so moved.
5C. For introduction, a resolution, appointment of Charles Watonis, 950 Taylor Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18510, as a member of the Housing Appeals Review Board. Mr. Watonis will be replacing Mario Savinelli, whose term expired November 24, 2013. Mr. Watonis will be appointed to a five-year term which will expire on November 24, 2018.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second. On the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, and so moved.
5D. For introduction, a resolution, appointment of Gerald Smurl, 300 Prospect Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18505, as a member of the Housing Appeals Review Board. Mr. Smurl will be replacing Gene Tessarovich, whose term expired November 24, 2013. Mr. Smurl will be appointed to a five-year term which will expire on November 24, 2018.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second. On the question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, and so moved.
5E. For introduction, a resolution, appointment of Michael Burke, 74 Snook Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18505, as a member of the Housing Appeals Review Board. Mr. Burke will be replacing Joseph Kayes, who replaced Robert Butch Cavitz upon resignation as a regular member of the board, whose term expired November 24, 2013. Mr. Burke will be appointed to a five-year term which will expire on November 24, 2018.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second. On the question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, and so moved.
5F. For introduction, a resolution, appointment of Louis DeBilio, 29 Forest Glen Drive, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18504, as the alternate number-one member of the Housing Appeals Review Board. Mr. DeBilio will replace Robert Jensen, who was alternate number-two, but became alternate number-one upon Joseph Kayes' replacement of Robert Butch Cavitz upon his resignation as a regular member of the board, whose term expired November 24, 2013. Mr. DeBilio will be appointed to a five-year term which will expire on November 24, 2018.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5F be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second. On the question. All in favor of introduction, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, and so moved.
5G. For introduction, a resolution, appointment of Charles Decker, 430 Charles Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18508, as the alternate number-two member of the Housing Appeals Review Board. Mr. Decker will fill the now vacant alternate number-two position that was vacated by Robert Jensen, who was alternate number-two, but became alternate number-one upon Joseph Kayes' replacement of Robert Butch Cavitz upon his resignation as a regular member of the board, whose term expired November 24, 2013. Mr. Decker will be appointed to a five-year term which will expire on November 24, 2018.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5G be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second. On the question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, and so moved.
5H. For introduction, a resolution, appointment of Joseph G. Healy, 2049 Edna Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18508, as a member of the Board of the Scranton Redevelopment Authority. Mr. Healy will be replacing William Laser, whose term expires on March 19, 2014. Mr. Healy's term will expire on March 19, 2019.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5H be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second. On the question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, no business at this time. Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 33, 2014, appointment of Robert Weber, 2309 Pittston Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18505, as a member of the Planning Commission for the city of Scranton. Mr. Weber will be replacing John F. Kennedy, who resigned effective February 7, 2014. Mr. Weber's term will expire on December 31, 2015.
As Chair for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of Item 7A.
Second.
On the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Loscom?
Yes.
Mr. Goffin?
Yes.
Mr. McGough?
Yes. I hereby declare Item 7A legally and lawfully adopted, and wish Mr. Weber great luck on the Planning Commission. I know he will be a welcome addition. Any other business? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned.